Hello, welcome everyone to the PA three fifteen exam one study guide summer twenty twenty two. And I'm gonna go through this fairly quickly and try to emphasize what you need to know for the exam. What I like to do before each exam is actually take it myself as I told Karen and Sarah before that we started. To make sure that we can focus on things that you need to focus on and so that you could do well. So we're gonna be going through each chapter for the exam and that's chapters. Two, three, four, five, and six. So it's five chapters for this exam, it'll be five chapters for exam two. As well, and the second exam, each exam is only on the chapters that were assigned during that portion of the semester. So. Let us start with chapter two, the Constitution. Again, a lot of this stuff was was. Things you've probably heard already, you know, growing up, but it's always good to have a refresher. Cause there's just so much material and it's easy to forget. So no taxation without representation, something to know like why, what were the contextual elements that led to the Revolutionary War? There were several. And a primary reason was the French and Indian war costs. Led to the creation of taxes on the colonists and on colonial goods and trade and different restrictions. That was designed to protect English businesses at the expense of the colonists. And this is after a long time, a long period where colonists. Had created lots of different trade across the world, there was the new world was full of rich resources. And they didn't like this cracking down, and so that started a lot of the. People getting upset. When this happened. You had committees of correspondence and these built public opinion against Britain. You had a series of different acts back and forth, kind of retaliatory acts, you know, the colonists would. Fight against something here or there or have protests and then. The British monarchy would create in the Parliament more nasty retaliatory acts. So you had the coercive acts and part of that was quartering of British troops in your house. Whether you liked it or not, you had to feed them and house them and they were the ones oppressing you. So it wasn't very popular, obviously. For the exam, know the difference between the first and second Continental Congress. So the first Continental Congress seventeen seventy four. Was focused around cooperating with England, with Britain in the Parliament. So it wasn't saying, hey, we're gonna leave you, you know, revolution. It was, hey, this is what we want to cooperate with you. So they had a Declaration of Rights and resolves for English cooperation. The second Continental Congress. Which is after the coercive acts and such. And after the olive branch petition. We're saying, hey, let's try to work this out, didn't work out. And basically, it was, hey, we need to think about separating from the United Kingdom from Britain. So those, those are the differences between the two first one, hey, we can work with you, this is what we we want. The second one was like, no, this is not gonna work. And then you had Thomas Paine's Common Sense, which we talked about, which was basically making the case. For independence and this book was in half of households at the time and that is major. That would be considered going viral back in the day. So Declaration of Independence was committee of five. Thomas Jefferson is generally considered the principal author. One thing to know, John Locke philosopher. Life, liberty and property and the social contract theory that it's it's the duty of government. You know, they have a duty to the people that they govern and. Know that John Locke was one of the primary philosophers that formed the basis for the Declaration of Independence, life, liberty and pursuit of happiness, all of that. Definitely know the problems under the Articles of Confederation. And this, of course, is from the perspective of the federal government. So Articles of Confederation, lots of power in the hands of the states. And very weak federal central government. And the problems were for the federal government at the time, there was no power to tax, so they had no money. No power to regulate commerce. And no executive to implement laws, you did have a president. At the time, we talked about there were presidents before George Washington, however, they were powerless. And the president really stood for presiding over the the Congress. There was no federal judicial system, there were just state judicial systems, no coercive power over states. So if states said screw you, you know, there's nothing really they could do and this was. Came to a head with Shay's Rebellion in Massachusetts where. The state was like, help us and the federal government couldn't get any other states to. Send troops, Virginia was the only one that agreed to do that. So Articles of Confederation didn't work simply. You had the reconvening, the Constitutional Congress, you had several different plans to create a new. Constitution and form of government and you had the Virginia Plan and the New Jersey Plan, know the difference between those two. So Virginia Plan, large states supported, when we say large states, we're talking about population. Not the actual size of the state, obviously. The Virginia Plan, which was the most popular, one of the most populated states at the time. Wanted a powerful central government and they wanted representation based on population, obviously that that helps them. The New Jersey Plan, which was at the time, not only a small state geograph in geography, but also in population. Wanted a weak central government kind of liked it how it was with the Articles of Confederation. And they wanted the representation by state similar to the Articles of Confederation where you just had each state represented equally. So you had those fights back and forth between the, you know, really like urban and rural, predominantly urban, probably rural areas. And what came out of that was the Great Compromise, which came from the Connecticut Plan. Which was a bicameral legislature. Where you had a House of Representatives that's based on population and a Senate that's based on two for each state. So it basically the compromise had both. The issue of slavery, know this. When this went into action. There were no limits for twenty years on slavery importing from Africa. However, in eighteen oh eight, the United States stopped importing, however, did not discontinue slavery, just it had to be a domestic. Only you couldn't have slaves coming from elsewhere. And. There were many, many different compromises that were put in to make sure that all of these thirteen original colonies, the formation of the original United States. Would be on board, so lots of different compromises were made, some that were pretty ugly. One issue in the Southwest, there were not a lot of people in the South, cause these were. Foundation were was agriculture and. There were a lot of slaves and the Southern states lobbied to have is when considering the number of representatives. That a slave counts as three fifths of a person and unfortunately that made it into the into the Constitution. And it wasn't anything about giving slaves rights, it was just to give the Southern white. Population, male landowning population, more representatives and more power. And you will see throughout the semesters, you've been reading, there was always this back and forth between the South and the North, the slave states and the non-slave states. To try to keep some sort of equilibrium between the two, which ultimately led to the Civil War. And that is an overarching theme, we see remnants of it today with the red versus blue states and things of that nature. So federalism. Know what that is, power divided between a national central government and state governments. In federalism, the national government law is supreme. Also in federalism, power is derived from the people, not from the states. If the Articles of Confederation power for the federal government was derived from the states, states were giving the federal government power and could take it away. You have separation of powers, executive branch, legislative branch and judicial branch. And know what this is, checks and balances. So we did talk about that each branch has powers to check on the other two branches, this is very important. To maintain some sort of control over government, not one group getting more powerful than the other. It's not perfect, but know what checks and balances are the term. So Article One. In the new Constitution, you have legislative branch, so that's Congress. And you have enumerated powers, know what that means enumerated means they're actually specifically listed in the Constitution. And then you have the necessary and proper clause, also called the elastic clause, which basically says, hey, if it's not specifically mentioned. But it's in the spirit of what was the founders were saying, then these are implied powers. So that's saying, hey, we can't think of everything right now, but you know. The necessary and proper clause allows us to say that this is the implied power. Based on what the Constitution allowed for originally. Executive branch is of course the president and all of the departments and such, you have commander in chief. The military that was unique and the authority to make treaties and federal appointments. And execute the laws faithfully, a lot of times, especially in elections, we think that the executive branch creates a lot of law and they do, they can propose laws. But everything has to go through the legislative branch, there are the lawmaker branch. Executive branch can only propose things, still has to go through legislature. However, the executive branch has to execute the laws, they implement the laws and has to make sure that. The laws are executed faithfully, meaning as they were intended. Judiciary branch, we're gonna talk a lot more about that later in the semester. But know what that is, obviously, it's the federal court system, including the Supreme Court. Articles four through Article seven, these are important, full faith and credit supremacy clause and the amendment process. So full faith and credit is each state has to respect the laws and judicial proceedings of other states. So you can't say. Now it doesn't mean that the state has to adopt another state's laws, it just means if someone or some corporation is coming into a state. And has been adjudicated in a certain way or allowed to do something a certain way, that has to be respected. The example. Was for gay marriage that was allowed in several states, but not in some prior to the Supreme Court saying it's allowed everywhere. And therefore the states where it wasn't allowed, still had to recognize the marriages. In their state, even if they didn't allow it due to the full faith and credit clause. Supremacy clause means, and this know this for the exam, that the Constitution. Is the ultimate law of the land. And the federal government law supersede state which supersedes local. The amendment process, we'll get into that in just a second here. Know the difference between federalists and anti-federalists, so federalist supported a strong central government. Generally from the higher populated states and from cities rather than rural areas. And anti-federalists supported a weak central government and kind of like the New Jersey versus Virginia. Weak central government generally from lower populated states and rural areas, it doesn't mean that everyone from, let's say, Virginia. Was. Federalist because you've had anti-federalists and Thomas Jefferson. So methods for changing the Constitution, know this. It's in the exam, formal method is to propose a new amendment, you need two thirds members of both houses, so House of Representatives and the Senate. Or two thirds of all state legislatures, which has never happened in our history. An amendment has never been, this is just a propose, it's never been proposed. In that fashion. So you propose it, you get two thirds of the House and Senate. And now you need to ratify it, to ratify it, it goes to the state legislatures and you need three quarters. So in the exam, you know, make sure you look at things like, does it say two thirds or three quarters, things like that. So in the case of the way the states are now thirty eight of fifty states must approve. This takes a while, usually there's a time limit put on ratification, generally seven years, we talked about the ERA amendment. And how that was finally now ratified, though it's been over seven years, so there's some back and forth over allowing that to become an amendment. And amendments, the Supreme Court cannot rule unconstitutional, once an amendment passes, which is very, very hard. To do, then that's the law of the land. Now amendments can be. Removed through the creation of a new amendment that. Contradicts the former amendment, we've seen that happen, especially with prohibition. And some of the other, some other laws that were. Overturned. Okay, informal methods. This one, we're gonna talk about a lot later in the semester, but no judicial review or the creation of precedent. So the Supreme Court can change the law and we've seen this and we're about to see it most likely coming up with Roe v Wade. Where they can rule and whatever the Supreme Court rules becomes the final interpretation of a law. Or they can throw a law out with exception of amendments, of course, if they say it's unconstitutional. And Roe v Wade allows for abortion rights for women and it's looking like that will be overturned, this has been a. You know, decades long quest in the conservative. Movement and they have enough justices now to most likely overturn most, if not all, of Roe v Wade. So the Bill of Rights. Know the Bill of Rights, so there's two matching sections on the exam, I'm so nice, I give you all of this information. Know each one of these, this is a very simplistic definition for each. But it's enough if you memorize it to to get it right on the exam. Matching's important because if you get one wrong, you're getting two wrong. In the exam, you can put the same answer for each one, but don't do that, only use them once and it says that in the exam. So you're only gonna have the first amendment as, you know. Related to whatever answer wants, don't use it two, three, four times, so each one of these is represented. So in the Bill of Rights matching, there's going to be ten. The other matching question we'll get to is going to be Supreme Court cases. If a Supreme Court case is mentioned in the study guide, it's probably important. So know the basics of what that case was about. Which means, you know, and I'll have the definitions in the study guide. So Chapter Three, federalism. Again, enumerated powers versus implied enumerated means this is specifically mentioned in the Constitution. So the federal, the central government has the power to coin money, conduct foreign relations, provide for army and navy. Declare war and collect duties and taxes. Now, part of that also, which was the wisdom of the founding founders. Was to have a necessary and proper clause to create implied powers, so enact laws for exercising enumerated power. So these are laws that they can't think of everything back then. For example, provide for army and navy at the time, that was the military. Now one could be a contrarian and say, well, it doesn't say provide for an air force. Well, at the time, there was no air force and if you were proposing an air force, you'd have been called a devil and burned at the stake, I'm just kidding. But. You know, it's important over time, things change, obviously. The elastic clause or the necessary and proper clause says that, yeah, well, air force falls under that and Space Force, whatever, this all falls under. Provide for army and navy, that's the spirit of what they meant. So big thing here, collect duties and taxes so they can fund themselves and have some power. And supremacy clause, we talked about constitutions, the highest law on the land, state and local laws must follow the Constitution. Concurrent powers, know what that is, those are powers shared by the federal and state government. And there's there's several, so they can tax both state and federal, as we unfortunately know. Borrow money, establish courts, you know, there's state courts and there's federal courts. Charter banks, there's state banks and federal banks and spend money for the general welfare, so there's a lot of overlap. State power is denied by the Constitution, know this one, so you can't have state favoritism. Or titles of nobility, so that means once they can't say, we like Arizona, but we don't like New Mexico. So we're not gonna allow people to deal with New Mexico, you can't do that. All states have to be treated equally, which I brought up in class in other classes before, we have something with. Through the CSU system where they've banned, they won't pay for travel in certain states. That have laws that they don't, that a majority of California's don't agree with, Florida, Texas, it's about up to eighteen states now. And that's probably could be challenged and thrown out. Because it violates the Constitution. So bills of attainder, states can't do that, what this means is a proclamation punishing a person or group without a trial, so the the. County Board, the city council, the state legislature gets together and says. This person doing this is illegal and will have to go to jail, you can't do that. It has to go through due process, ex post facto laws again. Are not allowed, this means you make. A law or penalty more egregious after someone commits it. So someone that they don't like and the state commits a, you know, steals chewing gum and then you create a, if you steal chewing gum at at the place where he stole it. You get a hundred years in prison, you can't do that. U S Supreme Court settles all disputes, know this between states. Between states and federal government and between challenges to the Constitution, I think the question on the exams is challenges to the Constitution. In reality, it's select challenges, cause there's so many, they only choose a very, very small number, we'll talk about that later in the semester. Full faith and credit clause, we talked about, they have to respect the acts, records and judicial proceedings of every other state. Privileges and immunities clause, and this we talked about prevents a state from treating citizens of other states in a discriminatory discriminatory manner. And the right to interstate travel is inferred from this clause, meaning it's not stated explicitly, but that's what it meant. Extradition clause, so a criminal can be extradited. From any state. And interstate compacts, and this was part of the problem, you had some states teaming up against other states in the original United States. And this caused a lot of conflicts and problems, so the Constitution said no state without the consent of Congress. Can enter into any agreement or compact with another state, they wanted to avoid that, they wanted to go through the federal government. You know, sometimes you're gonna need states to cooperate on some border related issue, but. You know, our highway or river cuts through both and there's some, you know, mutual project, but they wanted it to go through the federal government to avoid. Different states teaming up against others. Local governments have no power under the Constitution. That's important, there's a question relating to that, so. It's not really mentioned in the Constitution about local government. And they operate under a state charter, this is Dylan's rule from eighteen sixty, they said, well, it's this up to the states. And then there was later home rule, which allowed for local government to charter, create their own like constitution and self governing, but still. The local governments under the state constitution and federal constitution, you can't have local government laws that contradict the state or the federal government. What is local government, there's counties, townships, municipalities, the counties in in Louisiana called parishes. Because they just kept that term from their history under the under France, which was heavily Catholic. Municipalities, those are cities, those are incorporated and special districts, which are the most numerous of all. Local governments, including school districts and like I I D. De-evolution and decentralization, that's shifting control from the federal government to state governments, start began in the seventies with Nixon. And continues till today, continued through. Didn't matter if it's a Republican or. Democrat, for the most part, though, often it's associated with Republican Party. The last fifty years, federal grants. Just know what these basic things are categorical grant means it's for specific purposes. You know, there's a federal grants to states or municipalities or special districts or whatever. And you have to accomplish A, B and C and be accountable X, Y and Z. Block grants were created, this is a product of de-evolution, they're a little less stringent, they're like this is for. You know, in this many cases like Medicaid, whatever, but it gives more autonomy to the states. To do what they want with the money, categorical grants give less, programmatic requests are earmarks. Which are thrown into laws to usually, so the congressperson or whomever can make their people happy back home. And oftentimes, there's a lot of corruption associated with those earmarks. Or people would call them pork back in the day. Okay, Chapter Four, Civil Liberties. And one thing, when we talk about civil liberties, civil liberties are very much associated with lots of different amendments. But especially began with the Bill of Rights, so think civil liberties, think Bill of Rights, that was the beginning of civil liberties. And. The incorporation doctrine, the fourteenth amendment. Said basically the Bill of Rights applies to the actions of states. Not just the federal government, cause there was lots of states, especially post-Civil War. Said who wanted states' rights, and that was the whole thing leading up to the Civil War and they said, no, no. You have to, the Bill of Rights isn't just for federal governments for everyone, including states. Due process clause, equal treatment clauses, these were all parts of the fourteenth amendment. Applied to the Bill of Rights and these all just reinforce the Bill of Rights after the Civil War due to. Mistreatment, it's okay, sir. No worries, the mistreatment of slaves, freed slaves after the Civil War. There were new laws being put in as we studied that were making it nasty for them, they said, no, you can't do that. Due process, equal treatment, all of those things apply to everyone. Ritz of habeas corpus, this means literally produce the body. And it means that if someone is being held, that the courts and others can say, hey, you know, we wanna see this person must be brought before the court. And be told of what they're being held for. There were some issues with that later with the Patriot Act, we'll talk about that later. Selective incorporation, this just means that the Supreme Court generally has ruled on most elements of the Constitution. And the Bill of Rights over the years, you know, to kind of interpret or cement or, you know, reinterpret. And the only things that really haven't been gone before the Supreme Court or Fifth Amendment right to a grand jury. And Seventh Amendment right to a jury trial in civil, not criminal lawsuits. So those areas are still a little bit of gray that possibly could come up in the future. Okay, fundamental freedoms, essential to order, liberty and justice. Right off the bat, the First Amendment, they're talking about separation of church and state, but they didn't want to have more similar. To hundreds of years in Europe with one central church power that has a lot of power over the people. And there's several reasons for that, one is the Enlightenment period, so there's movement away from that. As well as you had various different religious groups that come to the United States. And didn't want to have one church take control. Over theirs. So establishment clause said no states sanctioned religion or preferred religion. And know the difference between establishment clause and free exercise. And know the difference between establishment clause and free exercise clause. So the free exercise clause that people may practice whatever religion they choose or no religion. But that's not absolute, you know, the government interests outweigh free exercise rights. For example. If you're the Church of Satan and you want to kill babies, you're not allowed to do that. That's, that's against the law. And so that's not going to be protected. You have the lemon test. This is for government working with churches. So they said, okay, there is a separation of church and state, but at times they could work together. Provided the lemon test from a Supreme Court case. Which says must have a secular and know this is a question on the exam, must have secular, non-religious purpose, must not advance or prohibit a religion. And must not entangle government with religion. And this is the reason you see like large Catholic universities that get federal grants for research, et cetera. And it's a big gray. I think that there's probably times where it's violated routinely and, and other times it doesn't. But it's politically difficult issue to, to address. Freedom of speech and press. We know what that's about. That's all the first amendment. You did have challenges to that. You're the Alien and Sedition Acts in seventeen ninety-eight. And these censored criticism of the government and this kind of led to John Adams and that, you know. Federalist faction losing power to Thomas Jefferson in eighteen hundred. However, they removed these acts before any judicial interpretation occurred. They knew that it was a dud and would get them in trouble. So they just pulled it. This didn't happen again till over a hundred years later. You had the Espionage and Sedition Acts, which have stood the test of time, unfortunately. And that was nineteen seventeen to eighteen during World War One. And this prohibited individuals from expressing or publishing opinions that would interfere with the US military's effort to defeat Germany and its allies. So at the time, it was very specific. Say, you can say you don't like the word, but don't give away information that's going to hurt the military. And the only time one could give away any of this information that was pertinent, that could violate this was decided in Shank versus the US, which is the clear and present danger test. So if we don't release this, there's, there's a clear and present danger. Okay, whoops. So protected speech. Limited prior restraint, you can't force someone to not say something. Unfortunately, sometimes, you know, hate speeches protected and symbolic speeches protected. If it's hate, meaning you can have a Schwastika or Confederate flag or all that stuff. And that's held up in court unprotected speech libel and slander. Know the difference between the two. So libel. The key is publishing a false statement that is damaging to a person, person's reputation. Written defamation of character and slander is spoken. So making a false spoken statement, the key is that it's false. So a lot of times you hear these nasty things that are said over political campaigns or Twitter or whatever. And you, and then the other person says, I'm going to sue for libel or slew, sue for slander if it was in a recording. And it can only sue and be successful if what that person is saying is not true. So if I say. You know, I don't like my political opponent. He's from the planet Mars and you know, Martians are awful. You know, and he says, no, I'm not from the planet Mars, then that would be slander. But if it's my, I don't like my opponent because my opponent supports. You know, locking up people who, who watch football games. And he actually supported some legislation to, you know, in this that was exactly that, then that's not libel or slander. At all. So fighting words, speech or press intended to threaten and provoke an altercation. Obviously, we've well gone past that these days and have gotten into fighting words, especially the last few presidential elections. But technically, you know, those are not protected. So someone can get in trouble for that. And there's a lot of issue here that's coming to play with the January sixth hearing, you know, were was a speech or different information shared via Twitter or whatever. Intended to threaten and provoke an altercation. So we're going to see more rulings of that in the future, I'm sure. Obscenity that state local interpretation. Freedom of assembly petition hinge on peaceful conduct. Right to keep and bear arms. There's been lots of controversy over the years. This was set up originally to prevent the Congress from disarming state militias, which they felt was important. To keep in case, you know, the tyranny comes again and they have to fight. Anti-federalists supported this just generally more rural, smaller states in order to keep the power of the federal government in check. And initially, there was some states interpreted as that you can have a militia, but if you don't have a militia, you cannot have guns. You're not part of an organized militia. Some states said, no, you can, anyone can have guns. And the District of Columbia, the Heller in two thousand eight. Supreme Court said, well, an individual does have a right to possess a firearm. Unconnected with service in a militia for traditionally lawful purposes. So you know, self-defense at home, all of these things were allowed. You can't say, oh, I have a gun because I'm going to shoot up the neighborhood, obviously. Search and seizure, fourth amendment, police must obtain warrant for searches. And houses or office, and there's an expectation of privacy and warrantless searches are only allowed. Is if there's reasonable suspicion, again, this is really gray. There's consent of the person investigated. That's why let's say you're stopped at the, the border. You know, and I ate on the way to San Diego and they say, could, would you step out of your car and allow us to look in your vehicle? You technically don't have to, but if you give them consent, then that throws that out. And in situations with no expectation of privacy, so in a public setting. I know Miranda. So that's fifth amendment right. You've heard the Miranda laws. So the right against self-incrimination. So the law enforcement passed to advise you, you have the right to remain silent, obtain an attorney, et cetera, et cetera. Exclusionary rule know these map v Ohio. So prohibits the use of illegally obtained evidence in a criminal trial. There's exceptions, however, there's always gray area for good faith mistakes. You know, oops, I didn't mean to do that, you know, usually they'll get away with that. But you cannot illegally obtain evidence. It's thrown out. Griswold v Connecticut, this nineteen sixty-five states cannot ban contraceptive sales. Roe v Wade, that's a big one that's coming up, that's going to be challenged. And we had the leak, the document showing already that there's been a position written by the court. We don't know if it's the official position or not. And that's right to privacy under the due process clause of the fourteenth amendment extended to women's decision to have an abortion. Balanced against three factors, and that's the state's interest in regulating abortions, protecting women's health and protecting potential human life. Lawrence v Texas, two thousand three. Right to privacy extends to private sexual behavior. Oh, Burgerfell v Hodges in twenty fifteen, that's fundamental right to marry is guaranteed to same-sex couples. By both due process clause and equal protection clause of the fourteenth amendment. So they're just saying this fourth amendment now expands to include this. And so that change, it was before that where some states allowed gay marriage, some did not. Now everyone has to. USA Patriot Act two thousand one, of course, again, I always say context. This is right after September eleventh. This is rushed through Congress quickly. And there's challenges to the first amendment. So there's limits. On freedoms of speech, religion, challenges to the fourth amendment, searches of private property, property and private records of limited or no judicial oversight. In some cases, no probable cause. You had the NSA surveillance scandal. And you had challenged to do process rights, reduce rights of habeas corpus. This is for detainment camps that we had across the world. And the people would never be go before a court and hear what they're charged of. And cruel and unusual punishment, all of that stuff. It was definitely a setback. For our civil liberties with the, you know, the time, the justification, while these are all terrorists. And many were not. So chapter five civil rights. So slave trade ended eighteen oh eight, but the demand increased. So they didn't bring slaves in, but slaves were traded from those who were born here. You get the cotton gin at the time. So making, you know, a big push to grow cotton in this country. So you had that. Missouri Compromise of eighteen twenty, know what that was. And that granted statehood to Missouri provided. And again, there's always this attempt to keep things equal. So when you had Missouri compromise of eighteen twenty creating Missouri, you also had the creation of the, of the state of Maine, which was from parts of Massachusetts. So that you had another non-slave state versus a new slave state. There was always some compromise there. But that's at any state that's north of thirty-six parallel, which is about the southern border of Missouri. Would not would be not be a slave state. So you'd have that real definition of north be south extending out west. Fortunately, Dred Scott v Sanford eighteen fifty-seven. You had the Missouri Compromise declared unconstitutional. Any state can be a slave state. And declared slaves were not US citizens and therefore didn't get any rights. Thirteenth Amendment, Civil War. Was changed things. Civil War happens, the South is eventually defeated. And thirteenth amendment is added that says neither slavery nor involuntary servitude. Except as a punishment for crime, where the party shall have been duly convicted. And we've talked about that in one of our documentaries. Shall exist within the United States or any place subject to their jurisdiction. What we talked about earlier, black codes after civil war, the southern states that saying, oh, we're going to create all these nasty laws to, to restrict African Americans newfound freedom and make them essentially slave labor again. And fourteenth amendment says, no, you can't. And and then you have the fifteenth amendment, which granted African American men the right to vote, but did not grant women. And there was many women's groups. At the time were upset, who wanted that to be like a blanket agreement for you know, women and people of color as well. So Civil Rights Act of eighteen seventy-five, yes, that long ago. That enacted the reconstruction era in the South. So lots of the North went down to the South. People who had been fighting in the Confederacy were not allowed to participate in government. So you had the term carpetbagger, meaning people coming from the North. And becoming politicians such in the South. You also had a lot of former slaves become politicians, were elected. Remember in the South, there was very high populations of African Americans. And the Civil Rights Act basically said equal treatment and public accommodations, public transportation and prohibited exclusion from jury service. So this was set to avoid segregation. Unfortunately, the Supreme Court overturned that in eighteen eighty-three. Which set the stage for segregation in the South. So the original civil rights bill was overruled. And then shortly thereafter, reconstruction ended. And basically all of the former Confederates are now allowed to participate in politics and own run companies and businesses and they went about creating Jim Crow laws to limit the rights of African Americans and others. And regain their power. And this was challenged in eighteen ninety-six, Plessy v Ferguson. And unfortunately, this Supreme Court again. Said, no, we're throwing out. We're going to allow, excuse me, segregation laws as long as it's separate but equal. And that of course never came. It's never separate and equal. During this time, you have N double S A P, you had the suffrage movement, know what that is. That's the fought for the women's rights. And then you have the nineteenth amendment, which is women granted the right to vote. No Brown v Board of Education, that's five cases. It's Brown v Board because Brown was the first of the five in alphabetical order. It struck down the separate but equal and segregation. And then you had the Rosa Parks Montgomery bus boycott. You had Southern Christian Leadership Conference, student nonviolent coordinating committee. This all came out civil rights movement of the fifties, which we watched. The video on, I suggest if you haven't to go back and watch that. Know these Hispanic civil rights Hernandez v Texas in nineteen fifty-four. It said a jury should include other Mexican-Americans, not just be all white in cases involving a Mexican-American. Cesar Chavez, we all know about him. He did a lot of work here in the county. Mexican-American Legal Defense Educational Fund and National Hispanic Leadership Agenda, two very strong groups. Working for Hispanic civil rights. Native American Civil Rights Northwest Ordinance, that creates basically the mid, what we call the Midwest. At the time, it was the West. Or the Great Lakes area. And then opened up easy process for getting new states and each time, you know, taking native land. Dawes Act. And Native American Rights Fund, the Dawes Act was ended communal ownership of the land and parcelled it up into pieces to be owned by individual Native Americans. Of course, they were often screwed in these deals and then people were, you know, forced to sell to others and it basically broke down a lot of the, it was a different way of grabbing the land from those people, which was awful. Native American Rights Fund started in nineteen seventy and that's a nonprofit fighting for Native American rights. And has had several hunting, fishing, land rights victories. You also see the right to have casinos, et cetera. Unfortunately, World War Two, the Supreme Court again failed us and we have Korematsu v US where it was said that internment camps for Japanese citizens in the United States, many of whom were American citizens. Was ruled constitutional, not unconstitutional. Later on, the Civil Liberties Act awarded reparations to Japanese Americans. It was just twenty thousand each, like forty-five, fifty thousand today's dollars. Just not much. A lot of them lost everything. We actually had a significant Japanese population in the valley, like I mentioned. And they never came back. Most all of them never did. They were forced to sell, go to these internment camps and then just left it for other cities. American with Disabilities Act, you know what that is? Congress, bicameral legislature know this senators hundred, there's two for each state, each with a six-year term. House of Representatives kept growing and then they said, we're just going to limit it to four thirty-five. And each with a two-year term. After each US census, the House seats are allocated to each state and they're adjusted. Originally was thirty thousand, now we're about seven hundred and fifty thousand. So just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger as we've limited to four thirty-five. And two-year term means that your House of Representatives is constantly campaigning and trying to raise money, which is problematic. We'll talk about that later. Again, lawmaking, most important power given to Congress, something to know ninety-six percent of incumbents incumbent, meaning those who are already elected in power, who are running for reelection. Those who seek reelection win. So the changeover is not as big as we think. Usually changeover is when someone retires or moves to a different office, pursuing a different office. Redrawing of district lines is done after every census. We talked about gerrymandering, know what that is? That means creating these crazy districts that favor one party over another. They were ruled by the Supreme Court illegal only if used to undermine minority voting. With civil rights connotations, but it hasn't been ruled illegal to favor a certain party either way yet. It may never be. As we saw in California, the first time in the history of the state, we have one less congressional district. Than before every year, every time before every ten years we would be adding. So that was significant as California has stopped growing. And you know, there's many reasons why probably it's gotten so expensive. Many people are leaving. But we had to give up a seat and of course it was us and Imperial County get screwed. And so now we have a new district which includes a set of parts of San Diego, now includes parts of Coachella Valley. Uh, now includes parts of Coachella Valley, uh, Palm Springs area, not Palm Springs, but. The more eastern part of Coachella Valley. Okay, Speaker of the House, know what this position is and how they're, they're nominated by the majority party. They're very powerful. And it has to be majority party, uh, they have roll call vote in House to approve things, they preside over the House, they recognize members on the floor to speak. Uh, they have the power to appoint members to conference committees, these are all very, very important. Uh, leadership teams for both parties, it's either majority or minority leader are selected by the parties, you have the whip, the majority and minority. Uh, types of committees, standing committees and subcommittees, joint committees, know a little bit the difference between those conference committees. And know the lawmaking process, so bill proposed in either the House or Senate, it's, it's not efficient. You know, can be proposed in either, and then is sent to appropriate standing committee, it goes for committee referral. Uh, if they say yes, it goes to the floor, there's a floor debate. And then, uh, it needs to be approved in whatever house, and we see this happening now, we have majority Democratic House, and then we have about an equal. Uh, Senate, you know, one more Democrat, but the Senate has the filibuster. Uh, the filibuster is the Dutch word for pirate. And that means that, uh, when someone goes up and stands and starts talking about any topic, they can talk forever until the time expires. Uh, not allowing a vote on certain issues unless sixty of the hundred vote to stop it, so that gives. The minority party a lot of power to stop legislation in the Senate, that's why a lot of things don't get done. Uh, if it happens to make it through both, which is very rare, uh, the final approval. You know, both houses voted. Uh, that wasn't filibustered or was filibustered, if it went through, the president can sign the bill into law, can veto. And this is for the exam, know this, you need two-thirds of both House and Senate to overturn a veto. So the president is, has a lot of power there in preventing laws from coming forward. Uh, because getting a two-thirty majority in both houses is virtually impossible, it's only been done a handful of times. If the president does nothing for ten days while Congress is in session, that becomes law, if, uh, the president does nothing. For ten days, but Congress adjourns, then it's a pocket veto. Don't ask me why, it's just the way it is. Uh, War Powers Resolution, nineteen seventy-three, War Powers Act, uh, forbids armed forces from remaining for more than sixty days. Uh, this was done after the Vietnam War, they said, we can't just have these continual wars happening. Uh, without Congress authorizing the war, which was the Vietnam War. And so that went into law, they see more than sixty days, Congress has to vote on it, because the president can send troops in, just has limited time. And then thirty days withdrawal period is allowed. Uh, impeachment, we've seen this several times recently. And the House of Representatives starts the impeachment process, and they need just a simple majority, which we saw happen twice. Uh, after the impeachment, articles of impeachment go through and are approved, then the Senate votes to convict, where you need two-thirds of senators, never going to happen. Never has happened. Uh, only two presidents, excuse me, three, my gosh, this is older, I apologize, three presidents have been impeached, Andrew Johnson, Bill Clinton, and Donald Trump. But none were, uh, convicted by the Senate, in Nixon's case, he resigned before impeachment and was pardoned. And that was because that was the only one of those three where there was a chance that he would be, uh, convicted. So he decided to leave first and get pardoned and go on with his life. So confirmation of presidential appointees, uh, the Senate, not House, Senate does this, fifty-one are required. It used to be Supreme Court, you needed sixty of a hundred, that, uh, was blown up, so now it's just a simple majority as well, I need to update that, my apologies. Uh, influence on Congress members, of course, political parties have a huge influence, constituents, colleagues and caucuses, logrolling. Is the term for supporting another member's legislation in exchange for future support, you can also call it quid pro quo. And we're going to talk a lot about this later in the semester, so there's not a lot about it in the exam, but about interest groups, lobbyists, political action committees. Congress also has several different groups that are designed to, that are nonpartisan, designed to help. So Congressional Research Office, that's in the Library of Congress, uh, does research for members of the, both the House and the Senate. And, uh, regardless of party affiliation, and is supposed to be completely nonpartisan, generally is pretty good about that. Uh, you also have the Government Accountability Office, the GAO, and that provides auditing, evaluation, investigative services for the Congress. Uh, it's the Supreme Audit Institution of the US Federal Government. And, uh, finally, you have the Congressional Budget Office, which was created in nineteen seventy-four. Because originally, the Budget Office was Office of Budget and Management within the, uh, executive branch. And Congress said, you know what? We know you're supposed to be, uh, impartial, but we should probably have one as well, just for checks and balance purposes, so Congressional Budget Office was. Created, and they provide, uh, budget and economic information to Congress. So that is it. You all have, at midnight tonight, the exam will open, you have until eleven fifty-nine Saturday. To take the exam, it shouldn't be very difficult for, for most of you, and, uh, I doubt many of you will need the two hours. But just make sure you go over the study guide first, so you're not going, oh, I'm going to just reference everything with each question, that might take a little bit of time. But, uh, thank you for, uh, sticking through, and, uh, best of luck to everyone, and I will stop the recording.